Again, I truly appreciate your patience in allowing us to do those commendations. So we're gonna move on. Again, that concludes my president's report.
That's hard to follow.
I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mrs. Powers.
Good evening, Mr. Curtis, Board of Education. Good evening, families from Bissell and from our middle school. We welcome you this evening to our Board of Education meeting. Board of Education, you know, we're so very grateful and thankful to the individuals that were commended this evening. And just a little information on the inside, you know, in order for our coaches to coach our students, there are requirements that they must meet, and I just want to talk a little bit about them. In order to be one of our coaches or advisors here at our school district, all individuals must have a CPR credential, they must have a first aid credential, they must have training in concussions, they must have fundamentals of coaching, and the latest is a sudden cardiac arrest module that was the newest thing that just happened this past summer, the newest requirement. So in order to have a pupil activity permit, all of our coaches are required to have all of those things in addition to having background checks done so that we're absolutely certain that the individuals working with our students are safe and that they have the skills that they need in order to react to situations such as the situation that happened at Tiger Stadium on September 16th. So thankfully, and I was just talking to Chief Morgan and Captain Simon, you know, on that morning, everything lined up perfectly for Colin as far as having the right people at the right place with the right training. And we are eternally grateful to all of the individuals you met this evening, to our city services, police and fire, who are seriously committed to making sure that our school district is as safe as it can be and our community is as safe as it is. And we appreciate the gentlemen and ladies of the police and fire departments here in town, in Twinsburg Township, and in the village of Reminderville, because without them, we would not have the great school district that we do. So our heartfelt thanks to the members of our law enforcement and fire department and everyone who keeps us safe every day, and of course, our coaching staff, who have the right stuff. You have to have the right stuff to work here in Twinsburg, and each and every one of those individuals have the right stuff. Fortunately, we had two trainers on the property that morning, a fire department which was three minutes away, but all of those coaches that you met this evening have all those credentials, and any one of them could have been the one to apply CPR and use the AED. So we're eternally grateful to everyone that works with our student athletes and our activity students, and just make sure that beyond knowing how to play football, or know how to play an orchestra instrument, or, you know, is a member of our academic coach team, everyone who works with our kids is prepared for the worst-case scenario, and we're very grateful that we have those safeguards in place for our kids. So just wanted to mention that this evening. Board of Education, later in the agenda, we have a resolution for you to consider, and the resolution is something new here in our school district, and actually, it's new in the state of Ohio. The new award that is being designated to school districts in Ohio is something called the Purple Star Award for Schools. And what this is, last spring, the Ohio Department of Education invited school districts to seek this designation. And the Ohio Department of Education, in collaboration with the Ohio Department of Higher Education, the Veterans Service, and the Adjutant General have developed the Purple Star Award, a designation awarded to military-friendly schools, recognizing schools that show a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. This is an interesting fact, as of Monday, our school district has 89 military children who come from 51 military families. I was pretty amazed by that number. In order to be considered for the Purple Star Award, our schools had to document that they have done the following things. They've assigned a staff point of contact, known as liaison, for military students and their families. They've engaged staff members and professional development on special considerations for military students and families under the federal law. They've assigned the liaison the responsibility of finding and informing teachers of the military-connected students in their classrooms, and the special considerations military families and students receive. And they've developed a dedicated page on our district website featuring resources for military families. And as you can see, Mrs. Farthing has displayed the page. At this point, it's hidden on our website. You can't find it if you go there right now, because we're waiting for the designation of the Purple Star School. But you will see that our webpage will have the liaisons' names and contact information from each of our five schools. Ms. Villa from Wilcox, Mr. Winter from Bissell, Mrs. Huggins from Dodge, Mr. Reese from the middle school, and then Mr. Sullivan from Twinsburg High School. In addition to that, we have to list on our website now, as part of the requirements, resources for military families that they can easily go to if they're looking, seeking information, and then additional documents that they can download. And then, the other thing that we've added is a place here where we have photographs of the many military events that we have here in our school district. You know, our Veterans Day program is a phenomenal event at many of our schools, and we were so very proud of, I think now three summers ago, when we assisted our VFW post 4929 in having the Vietnam Veteran Mall, a wall here in town. And the school district hosted that event, and we were so very proud to do so. So we have done a number of things to support our veterans, and now this is the next step to make sure that if we have families in our community who have moms and dads, grandparents, brothers and sisters who are in the military, that they have a place that they can find information easily, and it's connecting them to the right people and the right places. So we're very proud of the work that has happened behind the scenes from each of our five buildings. And Board of Education, I'm hopeful this evening that you will approve the resolution. That would be the final thing we have to do in order to submit now the applications from all five of our schools to the Ohio Department of Education for consideration. So I appreciate your consideration of that this evening. In addition to behind the schools, behind the scenes, rather, our school district has been very busy in October, and looking forward in October, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. National Assessment Day is scheduled for Wednesday, October 11th, at Twinsburg High School. Our school counselors and high school administrators have been very busy planning a great day that will include each grade level being engaged in some type of college or career activity. At grade nine, there will be a college and career opportunity fair. At grade 10, a pre-ACT will be administered to all sophomores. Grade 11, PSAT will be administered to all juniors and double-accelerated freshmen. And at grade 12, we're going to encourage college and career visit, and it'll be an opportunity day for our seniors to test drive some opportunities as far as careers go. So we have a very busy day scheduled for October 11th, which is National Assessment Day. Also, just a reminder that our homecoming activities are scheduled for just about two weeks from tomorrow. That will be on Thursday, October 19th, will be our annual homecoming parade, and then Friday, the 20th, is the homecoming game, and the 21st is the homecoming dance. And so I hope we see everyone at the parade, which will actually kick off at 6 o'clock PM. We begin the parade on McCarrian Parkway. Our law enforcement will help our parade line cross over Ravenna, will parade up Tiger Trail, which is our access road, down to the stadium, and there we will have introductions of our homecoming court. There will be a show by our tiger marching band, and it's gonna just be a great family event. So that is Thursday, October 19th. We hope that you'll come out for the parade. It's going to be quite, quite the evening, and we're hoping for no rain this year, because last year it was a washout. And then, the game on the 20th is gonna be a special event, not only for the homecoming court, but the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters will be inducting their 2017 class into the Twinsburg Athletic Hall of Fame, and it's going to be a really nice event. So we encourage everyone to come out for the game, watch our kids play, and just enjoy an evening of just some hometown fun. Thanks so much for supporting our students as we've gotten underway this school year. Our athletes are doing a great job on the field, on the court, and all over the place. So many of our advisory groups are off and running, and if you have an interest in supporting our kids, all of the dates are updated annually, and then again, daily it seems, on the district website where we have our district calendar. And so now, it's time to shift gears a little bit, and I know Mr. Winter is here, and he is so very proud of Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and we have great Tigers to present this evening as Students of the Month. Good evening, Mr. Winter.
I'm Mr. Winter, Assistant Principal at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Proud to be here to recognize some fantastic boys and girls as Students of the Month. So when you call your name, come on up, we'll give you a certificate, a pin, shake some hands, and of course, we'll get that all-important photo op at the end. So, the Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. In second grade, Olivia Conway from Mrs. Springer's class. Ladies and gentlemen, our second grade Students of the Month for the month of September. And here are third grade Students of the Month, starting with Avery Bobic from Mrs. From Ms. Potgalitsky's class, Cameron Emerson. From Mrs. Angler's class, Isabella Kornev. And from Mrs. Rowetter's class, Kyria Neal. Another round of applause for our third grade Students of the Month. Wait, did we get everything we needed, guys? Very quick, alright. Just want to get to the ice cream shop before it closes, I get it. So, just want to just make a couple of quick announcements here. You know, we're off to a great start at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Hard to believe that's already October, but of course, if you've been outside lately, it feels much more like July. But anytime we're not talking about inclement weather, I know that makes Mrs. Powers very happy. So, let's keep the sunshine going, certainly, but we've been off to a great start at school. We just concluded our Father's Walk, and we had approximately 300 fathers and uncles and grandparents come and walk their sons and daughters and nieces and nephews to school. So we were blessed with a great weather for that event. Yesterday, we completed some assemblies with Heinan's Grocery Stores, because part of our mission at Samuel Bissell, in addition to, you know, teaching reading and writing and math and science and music, we also want to teach healthy habits. So we started a partnership with Heinan's about three years ago, and each year, they come in, talk to the students about healthy eating, what foods they should pick when they're at the dinner table or at the lunch table. So it's been a great partnership, so something we're very proud of. Also someone who's very proud is Mrs. Moore, who's here from RBC, and she wants to come on up and introduce some fine students from RBC. So Mrs. Moore, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Moore, as you said, Assistant Principal at RBC, and I'm excited to bring our Students of the Month up here. Students receiving the honor of Student of the Month are recognized for meeting all six criteria listed below. One, it shows respect and consideration for others. Two, shows enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities. Three, exerts a positive influence on classmates. Four, exhibits leadership characteristics. Five, exhibits patriotism and democratic principles. Six, it shows responsibility with punctuality, assignments, etc. The following students have been selected this month by their respective teaching teams at RB Chamberlain Middle School. The Students of the Month for September are Jessica Mason, Thank you, RBC students, and keep up the good work.
Okay, guys, hold on one second. Your parents want a photo op, so come on back up. Mrs. Moore hasn't done this before, so we're gonna show her what we do here. Okay, so why don't you hold the certificates up, like, sort of in front of you, right? Because your parents are proud and they're here, and they want to celebrate with you, so, and they want a photo op for your scrapbook, right? Alright, thank you. Let's give these wonderful students one more round of applause.
Thank you. Yes, I am new at this, so be patient, okay? Just highlights of RBC. Last week, we were graced with a visit from our senior citizens of Twinsburg. Thanks to Ms. Van Dis and several of our seventh grade students. They hosted the group, and they participated in a art project with our seniors, and I think they all enjoyed it, including the students and the seniors. We also completed two Tiger Days in keeping with our PBIS initiatives. Tiger Days are a special time. We have one every three weeks where the students who have met our expectations academically and with their behaviors are rewarded with a period of time where they can play kickball, play football, touch football, basketball, dance, listen to music, play games, and they look forward to that every three weeks. Those of them have met the expectation. Those who haven't, they receive interventions with their teachers. And some students who are still working on their behavior expectations, they get to meet with me, and we are starting the book, Seven Highly Effective Habits of Teenage Students. So we're looking forward to our next three weeks, and those students promised me that they wouldn't be there, but hopefully, they won't. So thank you.
Mr. Curtis, we had a special request for the third grade children to come up and have their photo taken, because they got off the stage so quickly. So if any of the third graders are left, or any of the Bissells' kids are left, so Bissell, Samuel Bissell, come on up with your certificates so your parents can get a nice photo from this evening. There we go. Okay, one more round of applause for these outstanding Bissell students. Mr. Curtis, that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay, so this would be the time that I always welcome parents and students to stay for the remainder of the meeting, should they want to. However, I do realize that there's probably homework, there's bedtime, there's SpongeBob. So if in any event you do want to depart, this would be the time to do so. Thank you so much for attending our board meeting. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the committee reports. Do we have any committee reports for this evening?
Just an announcement that we're going to have the Curriculum Technology Meeting on Monday, October 9th at 6 o'clock.
Any other updates, committees?
Finance? No, we didn't set the date yet. October 19th, Finance Committee, 8 AM.
I think that's still up for question. Mr. Felber might have had a conflict with that, so we'll have to look at our calendars.
Alrighty then, we'll move on to Item F, Administrative Report.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Board of Education, typically, it is not October 4th when we're talking about summer projects, and we're not talking about the summer of 2018, but we do want to present to you two administrative reports this evening, sort of a look back to the summer of 2017, because a lot of things happened that we're very proud of, both structurally with our buildings and grounds, and also academically with our students. So this evening, our business manager, Chad Welker, and our Director of Curriculum, Jennifer Farthing, are here to provide for you just a summary of all the great things that happened this summer as they prepared to welcome our students back for another great year of learning. So I'd ask Mr. Welker to begin with his summer projects update.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers, Board of Education. It's hard to believe it's October, we're working on snow plowing, getting ready for that, but just a few months ago is the summer of 2017, and I'd like to thank the community, the Board of Education, for their support of the Permanent Improvement Fund that makes all these projects possible. Also, would like to thank the Board for their support on the Facilities Master Plan, as that really served as the roadmap for all these projects, as the majority of these projects were identified as high-priority projects as part of our Facilities Master Plan. So, on the next slide, I'd like to thank all the departments that work with me for making all the summer projects possible, starting with Matt McGing and his technology staff for the, all of his work this summer. We have a number of items going on front of the house with our Chromebook initiative, but also behind the scenes with the infrastructure, making sure that we have the necessary infrastructure to support that Chromebook initiative. It was really neat to see the teachers receive, the first-hand teachers receive their Chromebooks and the excitement that that is generating, and we're looking forward to moving forward with that. Also, our computer replacements. We are on a computer replacement cycle of about seven to eight years, so we continue to replace two labs. In addition to the lab that's pictured underneath there is our project's Lead the Way Lab, which turned out very nicely at RB Chamberlain. Also, would like to thank Matt McGing for all of his support on the multimedia project and a number of the behind-the-scenes things with servers, data switches, different infrastructure projects that if we hadn't done them, we would notice it, but probably, right now, nobody's really thanking Matt for some of those projects. Thank you, Matt. Alright, thank you. Alright, who's thanked today? Moving on to transportation, we do have a 10-year replacement cycle for our buses, and so we continued that cycle with three new buses and a new van. Like to thank Fred and his mechanic staff for a perfect inspection this year. This is our, I think this is third year in a row for perfect bus inspections, and thanks to the Board and their support as well for the bus replacement cycle. One of the big things that we did, we upgraded from a transportation routing software that was from the 80s and 90s, and have a new routing software called TransFinder, and would like to thank Eric Brennan, Tracy Abbott, and Bonnie Vadeen for all of their work in getting ready. They really made the transition quite seamless. I don't think anybody really noticed that we changed the backend of our system, and now we're looking forward to adding some of the advanced features of that routing software once we, once we got our first set of routes developed here this summer. Along with that, we upgraded our field trip software to FMAX, so we have a central database for all of our preventive maintenance, maintenance requests, technology requests, field trips, all of that is centrally located in one spot. For K-12 student activities, our biggest project was definitely the For K-12 student activities, our biggest project was definitely the multimedia project. So, we upgraded the scoreboards at Tiger Stadium, at the gym, and also, we're simulcasting events in the auditorium. We have 38 events for the auditorium that we're simulcasting that I'm just publishing to a group of 21 students who are working with the multimedia project. It's been quite a rewarding experience to work with 21 kids. It's a new experience for myself, and also, Mr. Curtley is extremely instrumental in that process, too. But it's neat to have that experience with the students. So, they're learning the same exact technology that's at Progressive Field at Cleveland Brown Stadium, and we're trying to organize field trips so that they can see some of those different things in action. So, that's in the works, trying to work that out with Daktronics and seeing if there's a way to arrange that. We also updated our auditorium floor. That same floor finish is the same floor finish for E.J. Thomas Hall and also Playhouse Square. And we updated our gym as well, as far as the flooring there. So, just a number of different projects. One thing I forgot to mention about the multimedia project is we wanted to thank our four sponsors. Without their assistance, they provide over $450,000 worth of value, which allows us to fund the scoreboard at no cost to the community. So, very thankful for Carpet Country, University Hospitals, 7-Up, Dr. Pepper, 7-Up Group, and then, the unknown one with the tiger. For food service, we got to talk quite a bit about our food service program at one of our previous meetings with Mark Bendis. So, don't want to steal his thunder there, but just one thing that we did do with the Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, we were able to update all of our vending equipments and our coolers and have them branded with our Twinsburg logo. So, those are a couple of samples when they were in the factory of our vending machines and coolers. And then, maintenance was definitely busy as well. So, we did a number of roofing projects. The major one was at RBC, which was right above the library and office area. Those were our next two highest priority roofs. We also made some pretty major repairs at Wilcox and the high school, updating certain portions of those roofs that needed attention. We did door replacements, flooring replacements, a number of painting projects, which we have pictures of, HVAC renovations, site improvements, pretty much everything under the sun, we tried to touch up our different areas. So, here's a few of the pictures. In the upper left-hand corner, that's our nice reflective roof, so it doesn't absorb any light that helps as far as for the lifespan of the roof. In the middle, up top middle, we have our masonry project that happened at Twinsburg High School to renovate some of the columns that needed some attention. The upper right-hand corner is probably the one that's most exciting, especially to Wilcox teachers, is that we upgraded our sewer line. Nothing more exciting than a new sewer line. So, that's remnants of when we filled in the hole for the sewer. We did a number of sidewalk improvements, touching up sidewalks at Dodge and Bissel. And then, the lower right-hand corner is an example of one of our door improvements at Wilcox, but we did over around $20,000 worth of door renovations here this summer. And then, I'd like to make special mention of all of our custodial staff. They did a great job with the summer cleaning. One of our janitorial staff is here today, Dan Heeman, so would like to thank him for his role with RV Chamberlain. But we really put a lot of effort into all of our summer cleaning and painting maintenance projects. So, and you'll see in the upper left-hand corner, we updated some of the framing for Wilcox, updated that with the Twinsburg blue. We, you'll see a number of the floors that we did. In each of our auditoriums, we updated the seating. We did some things with flooring as far as this minor renovations in each of the three auditoriums. Our dome at RBC was freshened up. We have new tinting at our cafeteria that reduces a lot of the glare from when we have events in the commons. And RBC also did quite a bit of painting work at the cafeteria, same with Dodge. They freshened up all their hallways with fresh paint, and it's amazing what paint can do to a building. So, number of different projects, definitely not a comprehensive list, but just a sampling of what we did here over the summer. Any questions?
No questions, just a comment from me, other than to say that even during the summertime, even though the halls aren't filled with children and staff, the business of education doesn't stop. Making sure that all of our buildings are warm, safe, and dry are of the utmost importance, and we make sure that we expend the dollars necessary to make that happen. Also, with respect to the committees that are responsible for the oversight of these projects, there's a lot of work that goes on in meetings that take place outside of our regular meetings, and that's where the work happens that allows the administration to do the things necessary to make sure that there's proper upkeep throughout the district and our grounds. So, thank you so much for all of our staff that are involved in making that happen, as well as the administration, who worked tirelessly over the summer, so that when we open school, everything is ready to roll. So, thank you so much.
I just have a quick comment. You made a comment something about the new transportation routing software and not really noticing much with that. That's one of those ones that people don't know.
Sure.
I noticed because the school buses seem to run more efficiently the first couple weeks of school, because I know those first few weeks, a lot of times, they can be pretty late, and that's understandable, but first or second day of school, my son's bus was there, I think, right on time, maybe two minutes late. And so, I noticed that. Now that we've mentioned it, the parents probably will say, "Oh, that's why."
Thank you. Our second update is our academic update. As you know, Board of Education, even though we're officially closed for summer, there is a lot of action happening with our students, and Mrs. Farthing is the force behind all of that, and she's here to share some of the things that happened intervention-wise this summer. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Powers, Board of Education. It does seem like our students were here and we were very busy with them this summer. I think it ended up being like possibly one week when there weren't students here. So, they were here a lot this summer. The programming that I'm going to discuss this evening impacts a variety of grade levels and different subject areas. To start this evening, we will start with the high school, and we had some credit recovery offerings at the high school. This year, we used Apex Learning as the program content that we used with our students. It was held for three weeks in June. Each student covered the cost of the courses that they were enrolled in. This year, we had 35 students participate, and those students earned 39 credits. So, a few overachievers got more than one credit out of that. To switch levels, we had Roar into Reading, which was held for two weeks for intensive reading intervention at Samuel Bissel Elementary School. As you know, we had a select number of students, and there were four students who participated in this opportunity, and those four students attended with regularity. And during this time, the students also took the Iowa Reading Assessment and the NWEA MAP as an alternative, or an alternate test for the 3rd grade reading guarantee. Three of the students earned promotion in that manner. One student took the Ohio State Test for English Language Arts, and as we know, that student passed the assessment. So, 100% of our 3rd graders met the 3rd grade reading guarantee, and we know how happy that makes all of us. In addition to Roar into Reading, we had Summer Reading Camp. Summer Reading Camp was held for three weeks, starting in mid-July. We had 113 students that were registered, and in the end, we had 102 students who attended regularly. And we had four classes of each grade level, K to 3, and then, we had three classes of 4th grade. Every year, we find ways to improve the program. They're usually little changes, but they usually help make things run a lot smoother. One of the things that we love to do with Summer Reading Camp is visit the Twinsburg Public Library each week, and we are so thankful for that partnership that we have with the public library. And the students love to go. Some students never get to the library any other time, so we're excited that they get to go in this way. And the librarians at the public library will do a lesson with the students, and then the students also get to check out a book or two while they're there. Obviously, our students may not be thrilled to be coming to Summer Reading Camp in the summer, but we did have 33 students who had perfect attendance, and those 33 students were entered into a raffle for a Kindle Fire, and these were three of our winners, and they were so excited with their Kindle Fires. And somehow, one of the Kindle Fires has my email address still associated with it. So, I know that these students are using their Kindle Fires a lot. Because I'm always getting things downloaded, so I know they are using them. And then, at the end of Summer Reading Camp, we do a survey. We do a survey of the students, we do a survey of the parents, and then, we also do a survey of the teachers. And some, these are some of the comments that our parents have had. We have noticed a difference in reading fluency and his ability to self-monitor. He's more aware of his errors. Blank student has been more focused when it comes to reading. I like the visits to the public library. And one day, I was at Reading Camp for dismissal, and that student in the middle, he was just so engrossed in his reading book that he had gotten from the library that day. I walked all the way around him to try to take a different, a few pictures of him. He was, and it's, I wouldn't say chaotic, it's organized, but it's dismissal, it's a little crazy, but he was so zoned in on that book, and those are the things that make someone like me very happy. Again, our parents, so many families appreciate that we provide transportation. They appreciate the jumpstart into the next school year, and they said, "Thank you for providing such a great service to our students." Probably the number one thing the parents would like is the program to be longer in the day it runs from 9:00 to 11:00, and they said, "Well, how about 9:00 to 12:00, or 9:01?" I'm like, "We're good. This is just a jumpstart getting ready back to the school year." And then, also running at that same point in time was our Extended School Year Program, and we had 10 students participate in Extended School Year to work on IEP goals. The goal with Extended School Year is to help the students with regression over the summer months, and that is Mrs. Trapp-Hagan's department, but we wanted to put it in here because that was an intervention that happened for our students. And we just want to say thank you for your continued support of these programs, because none of these will be possible without your support. So, thank you very much.
Mrs. Farthing, the one thing I forgot to ask you to include is the boot camp.
Oh, yes.
Can you say a few things about that?
Yes, thank you. This year, and didn't even think, this year, for the first time, we were able to offer a kindergarten readiness, kindergarten boot camp. That was able to happen through a group called Spark, and they worked with SEI, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have that, what Spark stands for right off the top of my head. But what we did with some of our students who participated in registration and screening at the community center, we knew that some of these students needed a little bit of boot camp before they started kindergarten. So, we were able to offer boot camp for, I think, we had about 16 students participate, and they came to Wilcox for four days one week and four days the following week, and they just did simple things to get ready for school, because some of these students had preschool experience and some of them did not. So, it was their first opportunity to get kind of a kickstart, a jumpstart into what kindergarten is all about, because if it's new to you, wow, what an eye-opener when you come to school for the very first time. So, I got to observe in those rooms, and they were working on letters and numbers and colors and just how to, I hate to say this, but how to do school. Because if that wasn't what they were used to, that was what they needed to get them ready, and it just gave them a little boost and leg up for starting the school year. And they were, oh, boy, they were cute. They were happy as can be, though, just doing their thing. So, I forgot that. I'll put that in my notes for next year, because we hope we'll be able to continue that program. And again, thank you for your support of that program. Thank you.
Ms. Farthing, just one question with the Apex Learning, the Credit Recovery. I know that, you know, we always talk about, you know, offering it, and in prior years, there seemed not to be as much participation. So, just wondering, this year, was there more this year in terms of people, kids taking advantage of the credit recovery as in prior years?
We are always typically right in the 30 range.
Okay.
So, we've had a few, we've had up to 40 where we've needed to hire an additional teacher to run two labs, but we're typically always in the 30 to 40 range, so. But, and just, we were not able to offer the math acceleration, because we did not have enough students interested in that, but we were able to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Okay. So, we'll move on to Item G, which is remonstrance. Mr. Aho, do we have any cards?
I do not have any.
Okay, thank you so much. So, then, we will move on to Item H, Treasurer's Report and Recommendations. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items H 1 through 3 together. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes: Regular Meeting of September 27th, 2017, and Special Meetings of September 7th, September 27th, Special Meeting September 7th, and September 19th, 2017, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of August, 2017: Bank Reconciliation, General Fund Financial Summary Report, and Financial Report by Fund, as sent to the Board under separate cover. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of August, 2017. The total, including payrolls, $4,781,249.99. Do I have a motion to accept H 1 through 3?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Discussion. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Night item passes 5-0. Next is action items, I 1 through 3. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read I 1 through 3 together. I 1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion to accept Items I 1 through 3?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Do I have a second?
I'll do the second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Discussion.
Mr. Curtis, if I might?
Board of Education, typically, we introduce to you the new teachers in August, and this evening, I have the great pleasure of introducing to you, hopefully, the last teacher we have to employ for the year. I'd like to ask Megan Kane to please come forward. Megan is being recommended this evening for the position of Reading Intervention Specialist at Wilcox Primary School. Megan holds a four-year resident educator license in early childhood P3 with a reading K-12 endorsement. She graduated from Slippery Rock over in Pennsylvania and in the year 2016. So, last year, she spent the 2016-17 school year doing a lot of substituting here in the district, both long-term and short-term assignments, and it really got us an opportunity to see what you can do with our kids, and we were really so impressed. So, when this opportunity came forward, we were delighted, Megan, that you put your hat in the ring for it. In addition to serving as a teacher substitute for last year and began this year, Megan serves as our 9th grade football and 9th grade basketball cheerleading advisor. So, she gives back to the community in many ways, and the
And finally, and probably the most important is Megan is a graduate of Twinsburg High School, graduated in 2012. And so I wanted to know if you wanted to say a few things.
So first of all, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm thrilled to be teaching in Twinsburg. This is where I grew up, and it's where I've always wanted to teach, and I'm very excited to start my career here at Wilcox. Thank you.
And if I may add, I had the opportunity to coach Megan in high school, and I am so happy you are part of the family. You will be an absolute asset, and I know she's got a great work ethic, and she's just a great individual, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Moving on to item J, J1 through 6. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read 1 through 6 together. J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached list, listing of media items, excuse me, media center items, to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below listing of items to be deleted from inventory, and they are listed right there for your perusal. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of $1,000 from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters for the purchase of a T-shirt launcher to support promotional activities of sponsors at the Twinsburg City School District per the attached exhibit. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement from November 1, 2017 to June 30, 2021 with page freezer number 500-311, Water Street, Vancouver, BC, Canada, V6B1B8, for the use of a social media archiving subscription software program per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement. This is a general fund expense. Five, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the bus routes for the 17-18 school year. Additionally, the Twinsburg Board of Education authorizes the trans-supervisor to make the bus routes throughout the 17-18 school year. Six, resolution for the Purple Star Award.
Mr. Curtis, that's a separate.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. So it is, it is J1 through 5 that we will approve. Do I have a motion to approve J1 through 5?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solura. Thanks for catching that, Mrs. Powers. I would like to first thank the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters for the purchase of the T-shirt launcher. I have not been the beneficiary of one of the T-shirts that have been launched in the stands.
Pressure's on.
I'm working on my AM. I'm sorry.
Just saying. It does work, though. It's pretty cool, and it does enhance the game experience, so that's pretty cool. I really appreciate that the Twinsburg Boosters provided that piece. Any other comments for, or anything you would add for J1 through 5?
Mr. Curtis, if I can just explain J4, the subscription for the social media archiving. Last school year, the Board of Education authorized a board policy talking about the district's use of social media and the requirement that when members of our staff communicate out to the public with social media, that those communications need to be archived. And it's sort of a new phenomenon, trying to figure out, how do you catch all of this, the tweets on so many things? So Mr. Welker and Mr. McGing spent the summer researching different companies and trying to determine which product will work best for us, and we bring to you this evening the subscription that we're requesting. We do have some work behind the scenes to get everybody on board as far as our staff goes, so that'll be the next step after the approval this evening. But this is just one more thing that we're doing to make sure that we're in compliance this time with your board policy.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just would like to comment, at the football games, I really enjoy watching Tad shoot the, the first time I saw it, I was like, what is he doing? And then, yeah, it was, it's a lot of fun, so thank you for doing that and taking one for the team, and, but I think you enjoy it, so.
She must've got a T-shirt.
No, I didn't get a T-shirt.
I've got a lot of work to do, I'm sorry. My first shot with the T-shirt launcher, I shot over the field. So I actually made it into the practice field, so luckily, nobody was practicing there. But it's a lot of fun, and I'd like to thank the Athletic Boosters as well for all their support in making that possible. It does, like with the scoreboard and with the T-shirt launcher, we're trying to add different dimensions to make it a game-day experience as opposed to just a game. So thank you for your support.
Okay. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Now, J6, resolution for the Purple Star Award. Whereas the Twinsburg City School District takes great pride in assisting and supporting our students and parents of military families, and whereas, as of, whereas as of October 2, 2017, the Twinsburg City School District has 89 military children who come from 51 military families, and whereas the Ohio Department of Education, in collaboration with the Ohio Department of Higher Education, the Veterans Service and Adjutant General have developed the Purple Star Award, a designation awarded to military-friendly schools, recognizing schools that show a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. And whereas Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School have met the requirements to apply for consideration by the Purple Star Advisory Board for designation as a Purple Star Award schools by assigning a staff point of contact known as a liaison for military students and families, engaging staff members in professional development on special considerations for military students and families under federal law, assisting the liaison, the responsibility of finding and informing teachers of the military-connected students in their classrooms and the special considerations military families and students receive, and developing a dedicated page on the district website featuring web resources for military families. Now be it therefore, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education supports the Twinsburg City School District's application for Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School to seek designation as a Purple Star Award schools, and encourages the district's efforts and its commitment to military students and families. Do I have a motion to approve J6?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Comments or discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Next, miscellaneous. Any comments, miscellaneous?
I've got one. Sort of in the theme of congratulations to Ms. Cain, welcome aboard from the office of future students that are going to be teachers, future teachers, I should say. CBC newsletter this, just this week featured four of our Twinsburg students from the Teaching Professions class that were involved in the hurricane relief, and that class is led by Josephine Everhard, and I just want to give a shout out to those four Twinsburg students: Emily Agnello, Kayla Eber, Alana Felber, and Cameron Robinson from Twinsburg. Again, future teachers as they're called, and maybe they'll follow in Ms. Cain's footsteps and all return back to the fold and probably kick the rest of us out of our houses and come teach in Twinsburg.
Awesome.
And I also wanted to give a shout out to Superintendent Powers and Mr. Welker. They did the senior bus trip for the senior citizens, and my mother decided that she would like to go on that, and she just had triple bypass surgery about a month ago. So I got to kind of piggyback with her, and what a great job these two individuals do. I have never been on the senior bus trip, and because I'm not a senior, but it was, it's amazing how much they enjoyed it. And my mom couldn't stop talking about it for days. And, you know, being able to interact with the students, each school had a different thing going on. At the RB Chamberlain, they had, you know, art students in there. They actually had the seniors doing art projects. They had lunch over at Bissell with one of the classes. It was just a really nice day, and it was a long day. I was tired at the end, but these, you know, these seniors, like they, they just kept going. So thank you for doing that, especially, you know, on behalf of my mom. She just really, truly enjoyed it. So great program. So you seniors, if you haven't done it, I really encourage you to do it because it's a great day.
Thank you.
Any other remarks? Okay, move on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for attending the board meeting.